BMA True Believers. Before I get into this video, I wanted to personally thank all of you for helping this channel get over 5,000 subscribers. I know it's still a very small channel, but it's a big milestone for me, so I really do appreciate all of your support. I wanted to put together a video covering what happened in Sheridan City Council during the public comment. I cut out all the other parts that were not pertinent to our conversation. I do plan on linking some other short form content that was captured as a gaffe, at least a couple of little shorts from Devon Granberry and at least one of the other city So please feel free to check that out in the description video of this description of this video. That being said, I wanted to sound off on what happened here in Sheridan. So they lied and said it was hybrid only, just like during the height of COVID restrictions. So they were only allowing certain people in there, and who knew? All the people that were in there were saying nice things about the leadership in Sheridan, except for one guy that I will give hats off to, who spoke truth to power and said it was going to hurt Sheridan financially in the end for violating 15 men and women's constitutionally protected rights. So first things first, we'll start off with Chief Jeffrey Martinez talking about how he respects the First Amendment, but it's a bunch of political talk because he really does not respect the First Amendment and how he thinks there should be decorum, followed by Granberry talking about he wishes it were like this more. And then we'll dive into the public comment section where all the people that were backing the thin blue line were there. There was even a guy who said he was an activist back in the 70s, but somehow I don't believe he is an activist anymore because he has more money now, or something along those lines. He also commented that he was going to use his Second Amendment against our First Amendment right, which is not correct either because the First Amendment was so important that the Second Amendment was written to protect the First Amendment. I may not even be the biggest Second Amendment guy because I don't carry myself, but I don't fault anyone else who does carry. That being said though, I'll just leave it at that and let you listen to all the public comment that was made backing the thin blue line, except for the one guy that did speak honestly, and you'll know who that is pretty quickly. Otherwise though, feel free to give her responses and we'll go from there. Thanks for watching.
And then I just wanted to thank everybody, our community members, for showing up. This is what community looks like. This is what civility looks like. Thank you. I've spent many years trying to protect others. The word got out that we were all attacked last city council meeting, and it's a hopeless feeling, especially for a police chief when you're the one that usually can step in and stop when there's things going on that needs to be stopped. I couldn't do that because of freedom of speech, which we will always protect. However, the individuals that showed up today show that there are limits to free speech as well, and they're willing to step in the line when need be. So to all the community members, family, friends, all of you for being here, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Once again, thank you everybody for taking time out of your evening to come and support us, not only that, just to be involved in your community, find out what's going on. This is great. I'd love to have you all the time, really. I've seen, I've seen old friends here, old friends that I haven't seen in quite a while, and it's good to see you all, and I'd like to see you a little more often is all, but thanks for being here.
Okay, then we will move on to public comment, which will be limited to 30 minutes, three minutes per person. We're going to start with people who have signed up for public comment. So I have Deborah McIntosh first. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, my darling. Well, again, thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting us be here. My name is Deborah McIntosh, and I was a resident of Sheridan, Colorado for 48 years. Sheridan, I have watched grow immensely since I was going to school here. I went to preschool, elementary, middle school, and high school, and I have seen the amazing job that the members have done for Sheridan. I'm up here because I watched a video of the abuse that you all had to take the last meeting, and it infuriated me, and I want to say I'm sorry for you all even having to put up with such a bow hateful person. I couldn't believe what I was watching, and I'm shaking right now because of it. It made me so mad. We chose you all to be in the positions that you are in, and we respect our police, and we chose Jeff Martinez to be our chief of police. He is an amazing man. He has done so much for this community, living here. He has, the police come out and recognize the community, they do good works for the community, and you all have done good works for us. So I don't know who this person was that made the comment and rant and rave here to you all. They need to stop it. When people are like that, she should have, I believe she should have been pulled out by the police when she started all that, because she's not here to help with Sheridan. She's here to condemn Sheridan for some reason, and I don't know why, I don't know all of it. But I am a resident, or I was a resident, my father unfortunately passed, and now I have to take care of my mom, but I still have family here in Sheridan, and I will always be a part of Sheridan. This is where I grew up, and this is where I call my home. So I just want to apologize for what you all had to go through, and I'm sorry, and I pray for the girl, I do, because there's something wrong with her. And I pray for you all in our men and women in blue, because we love you and we thank you for everything that you do in Sheridan for the community. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dan Stang. Please state your name and address for the record.
For the record, Daniel Stang. I want to indulge me briefly to make a small land acknowledgement. My ancestors are Native Americans, my wife sits on this board as well, and we acknowledge that this land is unceded land of the rapport, the Cheyenne, was used by many, many tribes. And so I have been hopeful to see a little bit more of that inclusion, and it's nothing that we do wrong, it's just a little something that I think gives us an opportunity to embrace. And I think Sheridan, I've been here all my life, I've been here, my grandfather built the home I live in in 1959, 57, it was burned down, so 59 is one that's still standing, right? And I have, I have definitely, like, I've seen a lot of changes. I've had some challenges myself, you know, I've, when I first was really getting involved with community some years ago, one of my neighbors that's over here with me, you know, we were looking to have a welcoming city, and it was kind of looked down, thanks to Dallas was the mayor at the time, and he made just a simple resolution, you know. But sometimes there's challenges, and I know that the community's changed, you know, there's a lot of, we have a huge new development, a huge habitat for humanity, that was the school, which made my mom a little sad because she went to that school to see it taken down, but you know, we've got a lot of new faces, and I think we need to honor and respect a lot of those new, new community members, the new languages, I really applaud you guys on bringing in the language co-op, they do a lot of great work. I'd like to definitely speak on, personally on Jeff Martinez, our officer has, our chief of police has been, we found out that we actually knew each other way before when we were break dancers together. But you know, he's actually worked with, he did training with all the officers on the ABLE program out of Washington DC that really helps to keep officers, give them some cultural competency and cultural sensitivity, and I think it's made a difference. I've talked to some of the people that live here, we had about 25 women, Spanish speakers, attended the training with them, it was really well done, and he's already talked about doing another one. So you know, there's really some good cohesion going on with our community, and they keep us safe, we really appreciate them, we appreciate all of you. And I really, no, I was sad to hear about what happened, and I was really curious, but you know, my wife came home, she was distraught, and she was crying, we watched some of the video that would, where they had went and got arrested, and we were kind of like, you know, what are these guys looking for? And there was nothing specific, you know, because one thing we were concerned about was if there was something that was done that they were, they had an issue with, and it was very general, so I didn't understand, and I'm glad that we had the support. Thank you everyone for coming down here, you guys really show the love, and I really appreciate you guys, and let's keep it, keep our city strong.
Thank you. Next on the list, I have Chicano MGM. Please introduce yourself, your name and address.
My name is Marco Martinez, and I'm actually not a resident of Sheridan, my son did attend high school here, and I still have family here. I also watched in horror the proceedings that you all had to deal with last, your last hearing, and I'm a long time, I'm 67 years old, I haven't always been on the blue side. So when I speak, I hope people understand that it's been a long process, and part of that process in my day, Valma, was being introduced to Chief Martinez. My last name is Martinez, we're not related, but I like that sound, Chief Martinez. And it took us many, many, many years and many hard struggles in order for us to finally get the leadership that could sit down at the table. And when I see our leadership being attacked, and the people that open their arms to our leadership, which is you all, so that we could continue to make those progressive changes, it just, it appalled me. So I just felt it was necessary to come and let people know, especially the ones that had, did what they did, that it's unacceptable. Freedom of speech comes with responsibility, and when you want to step up and be vulgar and atrocious, you're giving that right up. And even in my days of protests and demonstrating and going to jail, we didn't lower ourselves to that, and many people have, and that's not necessary. So I just want to tell you all, I'm sorry, like the rest of us, that you had to put up with that. Back in my day, we weren't allowed to do that, we'd have been pulled out of here on our butts, you know, so you have to be commended that you were able to tolerate and embrace, open your arms, but I do want to say, I know Jeff, I know Chief Martinez, and anybody that ever wants to talk to me about why he belongs here, I will paint the prettiest picture you ever seen. So thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jody Beadsley. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jody, and I'm here just to, I don't live in Sheridan, but I live in, I'm a native of Colorado, and I am here in support of the city council and the police departments. I appreciate everything that the city council is doing for the city of Sheridan. I have lots of people that I know that live in Sheridan, and it's becoming a better place to live on a regular basis, and thank you all for the help and all the hard work you do behind the scenes, because I learned a lot just today, and want to thank you for it. And the police department is just something that I 100% support. I feel like the police departments protect our citizens, our communities. We need to completely stay together as citizens and respect each other. Hate speech is just nothing that should be tolerated, not by any group. I feel what has happened to the city council and to Jeffrey Martinez, all of you, has been really hate speech, I mean, and that, to my knowledge, is illegal or should be illegal. So there is a difference in free speech and bullying and verbal abuse. I mean, verbal abuse is something that should never, ever, ever be taken anywhere that you work, or even if you're volunteering for positions. We, as a community, are here because we are here to support free speech in a positive manner with respect. There's no reason for verbal abuse, ever, ever, in any community or any environment. So thanks again, and yeah, it's just, the process that you went through at your last meeting was despicable, and I don't support that behavior at all, and feel that we coming together as a community here shows that we do support communicating in a responsible way, and in a way that's positive, and that can build our community, build the citizenship, build positivity, and not tear the community apart. No hate speech, no bullying, I think supporting each other is wonderful. Thank you again for that, and I feel horrible that you had to go through that horrific nightmare. Thank you.
We have Shaviv Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for allowing me to speak, my name is Shaviv Gallegos. I just wanted to echo what we've heard tonight. I am so sad for you all that that happened, and my heart breaks that you guys had to endure that, so thank you for continuing to show up here again today after all of that. I don't know that I would have been that strong, and so I thank you all for being in the seats that you're in, and taking the positions that you're in. I just love this community so much. I have had time over the last five years to get to know each of you personally and have conversations with you, and to me, that's huge, and it means community to me. And so I just wanted to thank each of you for continuing to do all the hard work that you do and put up with the things that you shouldn't have to, so I appreciate you from the bottom of my heart, and then also for Police Chief Martinez. I know how hard you work for our community and all the different programming and initiatives that you started in our community, and it means so much to me to see that happening. And so I just appreciate you and all your officers, I, you know, have had many conversations with many of the wonderful people that you support on your department, and so I know that the work that you all are doing is good, and it betters our community, and so I think that you guys should keep up what you're doing, and not listen to the haters, and just continue to be amazing people, so, um, thank you all so much. I have another thing, I'm sorry, I just remembered, this conversations with Council, I'm really excited about, I love that you all put your picture on this thing, I know Amy, I didn't see Amy tonight, but I think it's amazing that we can look at these faces and be like, oh, I've seen that guy at the grocery store, or whatever, you know, and so I love that you guys have done this, I know that we've tried to move away from like mailing out stuff, but I think you all have done some wonderful initiatives with getting that information out to the community. I was, had the honor of being at the conversation last Saturday about homelessness, and I'm really excited for the upcoming topics that you guys are going to be presenting, and I love that you're working with Groundwork Denver and the youth in our community to kind of bring some of that information to all of us.
Chevy, let me see that. They got pictures of us on there? I didn't know about this, I didn't know about this. A picture, every picture they use on, that handsome guy, that's what I'm talking about.
It's not, it's not the one with the whiskey.
I didn't know about this, I like, I like this, you need it back?
Thank you.
That's nice, I didn't know about that, I like that.
Okay, next up, we have Straight Shooter Patriot. Please state your name and address for the record.
I prefer to stay anonymous, and I'd also like to request to the Mayor and City Council, if I may, reserve my comments until after our remote friends are allowed to make their comments, please.
No.
No, okay, with that said, I'm a civil rights activist, okay, from way back when, and for the record, let me state that for a city that's 47% white and 41% Hispanic, I'd like to see this community give a little bit more color up on that day, as far as, okay, just for the record. With that said, I want to address directly all those fake activists out there that came over here and disparaged that man especially, for the work he's doing to this, for this community. It is a shame, and they don't know who he is or what he's about. That man did come from Denver, and I heard those comments that that lady made, he did come from Denver, he made a conscious decision and a choice to come to the city that has the highest crime rate in the city in the state of Colorado. Who would do that, except for somebody that truly wants to better a community that looks a lot like he did growing up? Let's be real. This community is made up of a high percentage of Hispanics, a lot of them are Spanish speakers. You guys needed somebody like this man, and what did he do when he come here and the streets youth, in the few short years that he's been here? We are no longer number one in crime, we're number two in crime. And that's not funny, y'all, because in the year 2022, every single crime category in the city of Sheridan went down, people, and you're over here crying about some photo radar? Now, the activist in me gives you puff for covering up those cameras, man, I can't lie, when I first heard that, I was like, wow, I might have done that 40 years ago, who knows? However, if there's a law against something, and you break that law, you are responsible for your actions, and I'm talking to every one of you people that are going to get up here and disparage that man. I don't know you folks, I apologize, you may be great people, I'm not certain of that, I can't attest to your character, but I can attest to the character and honor that that man possesses and has. He is brought to the community, car shows, where the community gets together with the police, so that the community can see that they're not our enemies. He had, what was that, that cornball contest he had, whatever that was, okay? Remember that one? He's had car shows, he's had barbecues. We, I brought all four of my grandkids to the fishing derby, and for the record, the only problem I have with that man and this department is that the next time you have a fishing derby, you invite the cops and the people, but don't forget to invite the fish. Where were the fish, my brother? With that said, I know faked activists when I see them, none of you would have made it in the 70s, where we had people die, fight, and get hurt for the fight for civil rights, so that we could come up here and speak our minds, and I'm talking to you people. That man is honor and integrity, and I encourage any of you to come and attempt to attack us, because we do have rights, and it's called the Second Amendment. And if anybody ever comes and attempts to hurt me and my family in the name of whatever, you'll see how we feel about that particular amendment, and I'm not talking about the far left or the far right, the far left is just as wacky as the far right, as far as I'm concerned, you're all wacky, we used to be fiscally independent in this state, let's get back to that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Matt Scarborough. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Matt Scarborough, I'm a resident of Aurora, Colorado. I too liked, many people in this room watched several of those videos that aired showing the horrible treatment you guys had to endure last week, and it made me angry, it made me want to fight, it made me want to defend, most of all, my friend Jeff. And I realize obviously that's not a, not a good option. I spent all week preparing a speech, opening with some jokes about First Amendment auditors, decided I won't go that route either. What I will say is thank you for your service to this community and the ones around it. None of you should have had to endure that, and clearly by the showing in this room, that's not how the actual community sort of feels. So thank you.
Next on the list is Michael Bates. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Bates, I'm a recent transplant, I'm not going to give you my address. The main reason I came here tonight was because I actually saw your agenda on Friday, and after what happened last week, my main concern was that you were not going to hear the public anymore. I was a city council member in a different state, I was a mayor in a different state. I understand how much it can, pardon my language, suck to sit up there and be berated and belittled by public. I've had death threats, I've had people show up to my house, I had one person try to burn my house to the ground. But I would tell you, I've watched the videos, I don't think anyone, with the exception of a few, was personally attacking anyone sitting on this board. They did attack Mr. Martinez, and they did attack Mr. Granberry. What he's done to this building is the reason they're attacking him. I'm also a US Army veteran, twice, I waited 14 years and went back in again, served four years, went back in, did two more in the guard. I fought for the First Amendment, the Second Amendment, the Third Amendment, and all the For him to take that away is absolutely unacceptable, in my opinion. I agree with Chief Martinez, there was nothing he could do last week because, or two weeks ago, because we have the First Amendment in this country. I signed a blank check not once, but twice, and I would absolutely do it again, except I'm too old. Now, do I think you deserved what you had to endure? No. But I hope it made you all think, because you are the people that can make change for this community. I'm not saying anything against Mr. Martinez, don't know him, don't claim to know him, don't know Mr. Granberry, but I can tell you that his resolution is unconstitutional, and unfortunately, you're probably going to find out the hard way, like my city did, when we had an unconstitutional resolution, and it cost us millions. So my hope is that it doesn't happen again, my hope is that people will speak their mind and let you know how they feel, because that's what public comment is for, but I also hope that you think about that resolution and seriously consider removing it, because it's going to cost you millions in the long run. And that's all I got to say.
Next on the list, we have Nellie Limon.
I don't know, is the light on? Yes, okay. My name is Nellie Limon, and I will like, if you allow me, to speak in the language of my heart, and I will, so I can do that here?
We don't have interpretation in the room, we only have it online.
Indira from CLC?
Yes, we do have interpretation in the room.
Oh, my name is Indira Guzman, and, bueno, lo primero que quiero decir es que mi familia ha vivido en Sheridan por los últimos 20 años.
It's amazing, thank you.
Okay. Y yo he vivido también aquí por los últimos, me parece como doce años. Me fui dos veces de Sheridan. Me fui dos veces de Sheridan, pero allá me sentía trayendo a Sheridan y es esto. La comunidad existe aquí en Sheridan. No sé si la puedo encontrar en ningún otro lado. So eso es lo que. Y por fin pude comprar mi casa en Sheridan y fue. Yo también escuché lo que les pasó la, este, la pasada y siento mucho que hagan pasar por eso. Este, yo trabajo con una organización que trabaja aquí en Sheridan. Que trabaja muy de cerca con los miembros de la comunidad. La mayoría de ellos viven, son miembros de Sheridan, viven en Sheridan. Y hemos escuchado, este, nosotros que trabajamos con ellos hemos escuchado de lo alegre que están por todos los cambios, todas las cosas que hay en Sheridan en estos momentos. Y cómo ha estado cambiando nuestra ciudad para, para mis corrosas y hemos estar muy agradecidos con cosas que han estado haciendo aquí en la ciudad de Sheridan. Los eventos que nos trajeron para que nuestra comunidad se junte, la, la movie night. Este, que trajeron para, para que la comunidad se junte y sigamos creando esa comunidad fuerte que tenemos aquí en Sheridan. So les agradecemos. Por todo el trabajo que han hecho, por estar muy visuales en la comunidad. Conocemos a muchos de ustedes que están en eventos, que están en programas, que están en juntas y gracias por eso. Les agradecemos mucho. También a Devin, a Jeff Martin. Muchísimas gracias por todo lo que han hecho. Nuestra comunidad se siente más segura y no solo eso, sino se siente conectada con, con la policía. Por qué? Porque siempre están dispuestos a estar escuchando a la comunidad. Siempre están dispuestos a trabajar como la comunidad y hacer de, de Sheridan mejor lugar. Muchísimas, muchísimas gracias a todos ustedes. Gracias también por, a, este, darle la oportunidad de hablar en el lenguaje de nuestro pueblo. Gracias por todo lo que hacen otra vez.
How are we doing on our time? Four minutes. Okay, I'll invite one more person from the audience if someone would like to speak. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi guys, I'm Juanita Camacho. The main reason I'm here is I've heard, I haven't seen or. Or anything like that, but I did hear you guys went through a lot. No reason for that. When I think Sheridan, Sheridan is family and that's what we all are in every aspect of Sheridan. We have each other's back. We do right by each other, including the two of you. I mean, Devin, I don't know what this place would be like without you. I mean, from day one, you came in and did what we needed you to do. And also Chief Martinez, the same thing. And that's what I talk about family. And wherever you go, you hear that word. And Sheridan is a community and a family. So, and I'm sorry, you guys went through all that.
I think we have one more in our schedule. If there's anyone else in the audience here who would like to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Victoria Brown, future Sheridan resident, currently in Highlands Ranch. I just want to say, I, you know, like everybody else, why you guys had to endure listening to those people? Oh my God. I, you know, just thank you for your patience, your decorum, your professionalism. That was completely lacking. You know, I am a free speech absolutist, so you know, it's hard for me to stand up here and. But there is a limit and it is called having decorum. It is calling. You can say what you want to say, but you can say it in a, in a way that is respectful. These people work very hard for this city. The chief, I met the chief at the car show, at the Parkapalooza, all the stuff that happens in this community is amazing. These people are amazing. They are committed to a community that wants to improve itself. And the neighborhood is beautiful. I love it here. I am excited to be a future citizen here. But I just really want to say. Free speech is free speech, but have some respect, have some decorum. These are people who work very hard for a community that is really thriving. It is really, really growing. It is really fantastic. So thank you. Chief, good to see you again. Thank you guys for all that you do and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. That is all the time we have for public comment tonight.